Testing, testing, testing.
Um, call to order the Monday, November 11th. Meeting of Committee of the Whole Administration and Operations. Before we do the agenda, just want to recognize that it's November 11th. We certainly owe everything that we have in this country to the veterans that have served, that continue to serve and that passed in serving to protect our country in this great place that we call home. So I hope everyone took the time today to attend ceremony. Honoring our veterans certainly a very important thing. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Chris Ward, seconded by Counselor Martell. Discussion on the agenda. Hearing none, I'll call the question all in favor. Disclosure of community area interests, conflict of interest in the general nature thereof. Does anyone have an interest to declare? Hearing none, business arising from previous committee of the whole meeting minutes? Anyone have business arising from the minutes? Hearing none, we'll move on to delegations and presentations, which is the 2025 Township Pre-Budget Presentation. And I believe the treasurer is going to speak to that. So. 10 minutes. The floor is yours to bring your report forward.
Thank you. So tonight we're taking a look at the 2025 pre-budget presentation. This is just a customary thing that we do before going into formal budget presentations in the new year. Just discussing a high level overview, what we currently know going into the next fiscal year and what we like to see going into the 2025 budget. Wait for the present. Oh, what's up? Okay, sorry. Okay, so just going over the agenda. So the first thing we're going to look at is the 2024 Tax Collection Review and Analysis. Then going into operating budget considerations, financial impacts to 2025, the draft five-year capital plan, and then finally proposed meeting schedule. So for the 2024 Tax Collection Review and Analysis, uh, so we can see that in 2024, the municipal increase was 3%, the county increase was 6.14%. Uh, school board didn't see an increase. And so the overall increase to the tax levy was 3.639%. So on an assessment of 100,000, uh, this equates to $46.14 just for 2024. And when you take a look at the last seven years, uh, the total increase on 100,000 dollar assessment comes out to 128.79 cents. Uh, so that averages approximately 18.40 per year. So just looking at the chart, sorry. So just looking at the chart, I just wanted to show, uh, the last several years, looking at, um, that the trend being pretty steady, stable, and then when coming into 2022 to 2024, seeing just a slight increase there, um, in the overall, uh, tax rate.
Just before I go ahead, Jess, um, sorry treasurer, um, just want to point out, you know, there is the difference between the municipal increase and the county increase. I know you mentioned it, but looking back to, you know, the years 2018, 2019, 2020, and then the result of 2023 and 2024. And, you know, we've had six years, uh, sitting at the table going through budgets and we've, um, tried to keep the rates, you know, 1%, 2%, but you're seeing in the county increase what happens if you try to keep it below the rate of inflation, you know, the last two years. And it's going to be that way again. Yes, this year you're going to pay pretty much everything back in, in two years. It's going to be over three years. It's going to be a total between, somewhere between most likely 18 and 20% over three years, you know, and we've had treasurers in the past tell us we don't keep up with the rate of, at least the rate of inflation with that, we'll see tax increases like that. So.
Yeah.
Just think it's worth noting.
Yeah, and well, I'll get to that, uh, later in the presentation, just exactly that about inflation. Okay. So looking at the, uh, 2024 spending analysis. So I've taken the median, uh, for the, uh, the township, which is 199,000. So with that assessment, just with the township portion, um, taxpayer is looking at 1,456.17 cents. So when we take a look at how that money is allocated within the township, really taking a look at the right side of the chart, um, so those top three, um, pillars there, so transfer to reserves, capital projects, uh, roads and store management and parks and recreation. So those three, uh, pillars there, they equate to 65% of the total budget. So what this chart should really, the picture that it should really paint here is three main things. So taking a look at what the township strategic plan is, uh, what the asset management plan is, and then also taking consideration what the needs and wants of the residents are. So that comes through with the council's mandate. Um, so we can really see here that, um, there's an emphasis on, uh, roads, parks and recreation and capital projects. So looking at the financial impacts of 2025, um, as we all know, the no assessment, uh, updates from MPAC for 2025. So the only changes that we're going to see is related to growth. So MPAC is, uh, projecting that the growth for 2025 is 1.13% or 11.32 million in assessed value. So very similar to, uh, the prior year where growth was 1.14%. Next, taking a look at the Consumer Price Index, um, we are trending down towards the 2%. And actually in September, it fell a little bit below, uh, coming, coming in at 1.6 compared to 3.2 in 2023 and 5.4 in 2022. So with that, uh, with the trend of this, uh, inflation coming down, uh, the Bank of Canada is, uh, cutting their interest rates. So the township has really very much so benefited from those high interest rates when it comes to interest income. So as we move into 2025, we really need to be cognizant of how much of that interest income we are allocating into the budget. Uh, so, uh, next point, uh, based on the 2024 tax rates, a 1% increase in the tax levy will generate 67,815.27 to the township. And of the 2024 property taxes collected, 75% were paid by residential taxpayers, 22% paid by commercial taxpayers, and the remaining 3% paid by other sources. And 2025 is expected to be similar in percentages. And lastly, uh, the total taxes collected, 56% remain in the township. 32% are remitted to the county and 12% are remitted to the school boards. So next, we're taking a look at the operating budget considerations. So taking a look at, um, things that could possibly increase the tax levy. So first being OPP fees, um, so for 2025, these are set to increase by 192,024 dollars annually, which is an increase of 16% or 16.52% from the 2024 fees. And like I mentioned, um, in the prior slide, just taking a look at the interest income that we are allocating into the budget. So for 2024, just for the main operating account was set to 220,000. Um, the actual realized amount for this year is actually going to be a little bit closer to 250,000. So the interest rate on, um, the operating account and the reserve account is currently at 4.2% annually, and this is in comparison to about 5.5% uh, from the beginning of the year. So just seeing those declines from the tax, or the interest rate cuts from June until, until now. And so things that, looking at what can decrease the tax levy, um, we are receiving OMPF scheduled for 777,800, which is an increase of 104,500 from 2024. So this is just a very high overview of what the levy could look like in, uh, 2025. So I have separated out, um, the township budget and the levies for local boards. Um, this is just to show what amounts are remaining within the township and what amounts are flowed through us to other entities. So the amount that we know currently for OPP for the 192,024 dollars would, if we were to put that into the budget, um, this would equate to a tax increase of 2.83%. So looking at the additional funding received from the OMPF of the 104,500 and then offsetting, um, with reserves, this would be a zero of tax effect to the, the taxpayer. And just, uh, propose to use an inflationary increase, uh, to the township budget to, just to cover those uh, annual increases of insurance and other operating items. So next, we're taking a look at the five-year capital plan. I do apologize, this is a revised, um, numbers here, uh, some of the columns weren't adding up, and I think the, the presentation that you, you received. So this is the updated, um, presentation. So here we're looking at the five-year capital plan for the organization. And just one thing that I wanted to point out on the levy and the rate base, uh, was the consistency in the capital, um, going through these five years. Um, so this is just a high level overlook of the capital projects with the information that we know at this time. As we know, things can change over a period of time. So looking back at this and revising it isn't something that's out of, this isn't set in stone. This is just an estimate of what we know currently. But it's a very good starting point as we look ahead in the next five years. And I just wanted to thank the department managers, uh, for putting together their capital needs and really taking a a good look into the future and forward and what the organization is going to need, um, over the next several years. So we will have more fulsome conversations in the new year regarding the capital plan for 2025. Um, you'll present, be presented the, uh, business plans and the proposed, um, projects. We're also looking at prioritizing each project based on needs to maintain our current level of service and additions to service. And so finally, we will, we will look at where funding is going to be coming from and whether it's a combination of operating surplus, grants, reserves, or other sources. So first, taking a look at fire, um, really, we're just looking at the design and engineering for Station 2. Uh, we will be tendering, uh, pumper truck, uh, 1 in 2025 with the expected delivery in 2027. For administration, uh, just one project in, uh, for the website. This isn't, um, a change in providers of, of the actual website, but the software that's used on the backend of the website is requiring us to move to a new software to be compatible with all systems of, uh, Apple, Android, and other systems like that. So moving on to recreation, parks, ball, diamonds, and tennis courts. Um, so just a regular amount in for picnic tables and, uh, garbage cans. You see an amount and therefore a new splash pad and, uh, truck, which was, uh, pre-approved. Also, uh, play structure, uh, renovation and upgrades. This is for the Johnstown Park, which is our most used, uh, which is showing signs of wear and deterioration. So this amount is for a complete replacement and will meet, uh, current safety standards. And last is the Cardinal Tennis, um, pickleball court. So the amount that's in there, the 151 is 50% of the total project, and this is contingent on, um, grants, uh, receiving, uh, grant for 50% of the project. Next, in recreation, we're looking at arenas, pools, and halls. So looking at an installation of a second dehumidifier in the Spencerville Arena due to shifting seasonal weather patterns, which affect the performance of the arena's base surface. Next, looking at the Johnstown pool piping. So the current piping is, uh, over 40 years old and showing signs of deterioration. So this is a critical item for the continuation of the Johnstown Pool. And lastly, just looking at, uh, South Center, looking for a generator and, uh, UV upgrades. Next, uh, so Public Works, so this is for equipment. So we are looking at the delivery of the second tandem truck. This is the second out of three that are required for replacement, and you can see in 2027, it's tentatively, um, hooked in there for the third truck. Uh, yeah, so just an amount there for a roadside mower and, uh, some amounts in for, uh, work to be completed on the Public Works Building. And that amount for pedestrian crossings is for three proposed crossings, two in Cardinal and one in Spencerville. So next, looking at Public Works Rural Roads, uh, so you can see, um, the work that had, has been completed in 2024, and then looking at the next column for 2025. So also noticing that, um, very similar amounts staggering from year, from 2024 through to 2028. And for Public Works, uh, for Cardinal, New Wexford, Johnstown, and Spencerville. So again, you can see the amounts in there that were completed in 2024 and the proposed, uh, roads for 2025. I just wanted to point out that I know you don't see any amount in for Johnstown for 2025, but when you look in 2024, there was, um, some substantial work, roadwork that was done. And then looking for a forward to 2028 is when you see, um, the next, um, phase of roads being completed for Johnstown. But again, we'll have more fulsome conversations of, of these capital, uh, projects in the new year. Lastly, for base rate capital projects, so for environmental services, um, just noting that all charges are paid directly by, uh, by the direct users of the assets. So looking at the Cardinal wastewater, we can see some workstation upgrades that will be split 50% with Cardinal water. Uh, there's also a generator and Cardinal water. We can see, um, tentatively, there's, uh, 400,000 an amount in for UV replacements at the water plant, uh, a vehicle replacement and a generator. And just looking at Spencerville wastewater system, uh, the main one there being the, um, the pump upgrade, or sorry, the Station 1 pump upgrade. And also an amount in there for a generator. Okay, so looking at, uh, the proposed meeting schedule, so January 13th being the first capital meeting, January 23rd, uh, capital meeting number two, if needed. February 10th, uh, the first operating budget meeting, February 20th, uh, the second, if needed. March 10th, uh, will be the final consolidated budget presentation. And finally, March 24th would be, uh, the budget bylaw being presented. Thank you.
Uh, thank you to the treasurer. I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it to the floor for, for questions in case they, um, in case the group has any, um, you know, it's a pre-budget. Yeah, pre-budget discussion, but I think it's imperative that everyone understands where we're, where we're, where we're going. And if they have projects or things that aren't included, um, before we go too far down the road. Um, if there's anyone that wants to see something, it's probably now's the time to at least make sure staff's aware. So, um, anything to add, Chris? Are you good?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just as far, I mean, it is preliminary, obviously. Um, the, the splash pad, thank you for putting it in there. I know I asked for that last year. Um, I'm would like to see it not necessarily as a levy. I'm assuming that when you say a levy, we're talking about a levy to the Spencerville areas. Is that how that works? Or are we just talking, I just did part of the tax increase potentially? Okay, yeah, okay, that's fine. That's, I was just more, I was trying to figure out the, uh, the linguistics there. So appreciate that. Um, and otherwise, I really appreciate the five-year plan and, and, uh, the, the consistency of roadwork we're talking about doing in there. So I like that aspect of it. I'd like to build the plan ahead like that. So, uh, more of a comment to that. Um, and then otherwise, I think that was all I really had on there that, uh, I wanted to talk to. And I like the schedule, getting it done nice and early this year as well. So.
Good, thank you. Deputy, anything?
Uh, no, I just have, uh, a comment, and I'd like to thank our, our managers for, for the, uh, work that you guys went through to come up with their capital budgets. It's going to be hard, as we all know, we don't get everything, but, uh, it sure puts us in a good spot to, to keep going over and, and what we need and what we don't need. I just have one question, recreation, if you could help me, Mike. That pool building in Johnstown, that's so outdated. Have, when are we gonna maybe take a, a whack at that? That's my one wish list.
Through the chair to the deputy mayor, um, step one would be to make sure that the pool pumping, pumping system and piping system works before we do the building. So.
And that's in the budget this year, 225,000. Thank you.
Counselor, anything? Nothing. John? No, good. Um, I just think it's important, there's one other thing that's, that's important to note, and I, and I know, I think it was, uh, on, I don't remember the page. I thought I wrote it down. Maybe I didn't. Is the, for the OPP costing, I guess it's page 16 of, uh, 123. And, and I sent it to staff. I keep forgetting to send it to staff. I sent it to staff. Um, that we have in a letter from our MPP's office stating that the increase to the OPP, they will work with municipalities to make sure that there is no, um, negative impact to municipalities. So, you know, the words, uh, make us whole is, has been there. And I know that that doesn't, there's no promise for next year and the year after and the year after. So we have to, you know, build and prepare for that. Supposedly that 192 somehow, some way is going, we're going to get that taken care of this year. So we still, still have to build it into next year's, but just the impact of this year isn't necessarily going to be as, as strong. So.
Carry on to that point, uh, Mr. Mayor. I think in last year, the OPP was decreased, wasn't it? Wasn't an increase, it was decreased.
Uh, through the chair to the deputy mayor, uh, last year was a slight increase, but the year before was a decrease.
Yeah, and, and the, the increase of the 192 is to make up for the shortfall from last year. So there's a good, I think it's almost $70,000 that it was over budget for our portion.
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, echoing everyone around the table, thank you. And thank you to, you know, all of the, uh, department heads for having this forward. I find each year as we refine the process, um, staff continues to do, uh, and make this, um, a much less, uh, daunting and divisive task at the table for us. We, we were getting there. We're not totally there yet, but we're, we're definitely made, it's definitely a, a better process from, from when I started. So, uh, thank you for the great work that goes into it. All right, moving on, there are no items on consent agenda. So we are on to, uh, discussion item, and that is review, review of the transfer station fees and I'll Director of Operations. Turn it over to the Director of Operations then. Mr. Grant, you're on the spot.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, just wanted to, um, sort of take a review over the last three years of the transfer station, um, operation from a revenue and expense perspective. And really just, um, looking for committee to have a little bit of a discussion with respect to, um, this service and similar services on whether what expenses should be considered, uh, when you're looking at it from a, either a full cost, uh, recovery service, or whether it's a partial cost recovery service, and if it's a partial cost recovery service, what item should be included and excluded? Um, and I think based on that, we may be able to, um, have a more fulsome look at, uh, potential if there, if, if there's a need for some, um, revenue adjustments with respect to that, to, to, to come closer to balancing some of those, uh, some of those areas. So I think with that, uh, I can certainly answer any questions with respect to that, but I think it's fairly, um, self-explanatory as a starting point.
Uh, thank you, Director of Operations. Um, before we begin, I'll, I'll just ask a quick question. Um, the idea is user fee, uh, 30% taxation, 70%. But just, so when you get down to the graph that's under it, where it says table, table two, which is on page 29, user fee versus taxation excluding labor? So is the 70% on the taxation part that includes the labor? Is that the idea?
Uh, correct.
Okay. And then, so then, when we get down on the, the next part, it's excluding the, the labor. So in 2022, it almost broke even. Is that the, that's sort of the premise?
So through the chair, yeah, I would say if you remove the, um, labor component, if you excluded that from, uh, from the assessment, then it would pretty much, uh, uh, fairly, yeah, within 3% would have been, uh, break even.
Okay, so that I understand, I understand this, right? The 70% is to pay for, like, going and picking up the material, the work that's involved in it, the, the contract, and then the 30% is the actual volume of material that's collected? Just want to make sure that my.
Yeah. So I would say the revenue generated includes, um, basically there, if we utilize, um, let's go through, um, 2021. Uh, so the tipping fees received at the transfer station were about 15,314. We did have, uh, some, some scrap metal, uh, additional revenue, uh, to equal that 19,000. But with respect to sort of site maintenance, which would include, um, limerick, environmental, uh, picking up their, their disposal fees, et cetera. Um, uh, labor, um, advertising, um, and machine rental, we were, uh, the expenses were about 67,000. So, um, the user fee only covered like the 19,000, so to speak, or really 15,000. So.
I think I get it.
That's where that break, that's where that breakdown was.
Yeah, so table two is if, if on, on 21, 22, and 23, you just take out the labor line.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, now I get it. All right, thank you. And hopefully those two, uh, the goal would be that those two actually equal out to zero then. Is that the, is that the idea? Is that the suggestion?
I, I guess, I guess that's part of, that's part of the, um, discussion, uh, really of where, 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 like where, what items do you want included or excluded, uh, to, as a comparison to determine what some of those charges should be?
Okay.
If we look at it from the curbside collection, um, perspective, right, right, we were, we were working towards achieving that as so, sort of a full, um, cost recovery.
Right. Okay. I think I want to ask one other question before we start, uh, before I open it up for other discussion. So this is, this is directly related to, to the transfer site, uh, and, and potential increases there. Do we know what, what the full cost is going to be for roadside pickup yet? I mean, I know we signed the contract for garbage pickup, and there's not, are we not, we're not supposed to see any additional cost for recycling pickup. It's all been put to the user. Am I, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what the potential increases. Additional cost for recycling pickup, it's all been put to the user. Am I, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding what the potential increases are.
Yeah, I think to the mayor. As of February first of two thousand twenty-five, there should be no costs. To the township associated with the recycling portion, it would just be the solid waste portion. Which would be three forty-two.
Memory serves me. Yeah, and it's pretty close to what it was. There's not really, so that, okay, all right, so we're not going to see a big increase there. I'm just because you could end up with two big increases. Okay, so. If you look as confused as I was today.
The three forty-two for next year is a big increase, right? It's a thirty percent increase on what they had from the year before. Based on just the solid waste aspect, not the recycling and and other fees, right? So, you know, just, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, because that is, that's a big increase and. You know, I know that there was a bit of a reconciliation of maybe prior prior years losses and things like that, but it was. I mean, it's it's still thirty percent increase, so that's that's a huge number there, right? And, you know, this, the the transfer station expenses pale in comparison to those numbers essentially, so.
Yeah, those in the. The reason for the increase, if you look back to the contract, we switched providers. And the provider that we switched to bid extremely aggressively. If you compare it back to what, you know, the tenders were for the other providers, the three forty-two is not out of line, but. For the company that won the contract, it was. You know, it was an extremely good, an extremely good price. We wondered how they would actually be able to provide the service for the dollar that they were charging.
You know, I appreciate that. I mean, we had that that discussion for sure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the Director of Operations, you've got to. Talking about considering roadside dumping and such, is that consistent or has been levels been going up and going down the last three years? How much time do we actually spend? I know we see a lot of stuff on my road, but I always assume that's just because it was so rural.
Through the chair, there are definitely. Hot spot locations within the within the township that we. Have a reasonable amount of dumping going on. I would certainly say that. Like it the increases to the garbage bag. Costs didn't result in any, any kind of significant increase in in respect to. I would say roadside dumping. However, I would. Not be as confident in in that correlation, should we have. Any kind of dramatic increase with respect to the to the transfer site costs. Especially considering that a number of those costs are associated with bigger bulkier items. That are being disposed of, not not items within the. That can fit into the garbage bag at curbside, if that helps at all.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Chair, to to Dave. Is there. In the expenses, is there any way where we can cut back? Like, for instance, do we for site maintenance, do we? Do we ever contract that out? For the dumpsters, or is it just always the same company and so on? And the and the labor? Is there possible we get two part timers in there instead of one part-time, one full-time? That would cut down. Just, I'm just wondering if there's any possible way we can cut the expenses down. I think I'm on track. You don't want an increase because it's probably is gonna. Start having a little bit more. Garbage around the township than what we have now, because. It's not really too, I know you're saying hotspots, and I think I know where some, most of the hotspots are. But if we increase it, you think we're going to see more? Like, say, six bucks a bag? And that, I'm just throwing that out. I'm not saying I'm I'm for it. I just want to know your your information. Yeah, yeah, no, no, cards.
So through the chair. Hopefully I'll be able to answer all those questions. So I think with, no, with with respect to the contractor. We have had the same contractor, Limerick Environmental for several years. They're. Their services are fairly competitive. There's no doubt that we certainly could go out for that. I'm not necessarily sure there would be much in the way of of savings. Could you look at adjusting the labor complement at the at the site? It's something that could be looked into. You're not really going to see probably like a tremendous amount. It depends on what you're. From a from a committee and council perspective of what you want to see this service. The break even at, you know, if if labor's included, then. You're going to need to, you know, we're going to really need to look at how the. How some of those fees are increased. If you're if you're not looking at that labor component, I think it's a. It's a relatively minor adjustment. It may be if, you know, five dollars more for a mattress, it may be, you know. Those those type of items, and I guess you have to consider whether that's. The five dollar increase or what you may generate in revenue, depending on the additional. Level of effort that would be taken by the by the department to to do potentially some additional cleanups. It's a little bit of a catch twenty-two.
And I'll just come back to staff. Are we looking for direction on this?
Through the chair, I think the the discussion that could come back as. Just to prepare a report on on what fees could look like in in the future.
Okay, I think I'll weigh in then too, because I think if. You know, we we have enough of an issue with the hotspots, I think, in in my viewpoint, I certainly want to encourage people. To utilize the transfer station, not our not our ditches or or parks or places that that garbage ends up being dumped. So for a small amount of, you know, an extra five dollar fee in a mattress, if that's what causes somebody to dump it in somebody's. Ditch versus taking it to the transfer station, I'd I'd prefer that the the pricing stayed the same. I want as much going to that transfer station and. Not on the sides of our roads. We work hard. I know the the staff work really hard to make sure that they keep our township clean and we. I think it's very important that we continue to work towards, you know, that sort of goal of having a good, clean. Area and set set an example for that, not, I know that we're looking at full cost recovery, but. Not really sure that that's. That that's possible without without making a bigger, bigger issue.
If I, and I can care with that, I think it, you know, we're unless we were to do a serious. Look at the fees in a significant way, all we're gonna do is create more of a problem. I I see that happening as well. The labor value here, say forty-eight thousand a year. Is that an extrapolated or is that actual hours? Because I guess I'm trying to figure out, I know we're open for about. Saturdays about half a day or something like that. So there's more to it than that, obviously, is where labor's coming from, if that's the case, right?
So through the through the chair to councillor Ward, that would be the. That would include the Saturdays, but also time spent throughout the week. If there was, we will indicate burning at the at the transfer station, which is permitted. So there would be staff members there monitoring that, so it's not completely isolated to the Saturday morning.
Thank you very much, and and I'm just trying to think of the bigger picture, you know, or the the transfer station plus. Our garbage collection, the bag fees, less the costs, and I mean, up until I think. This 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 latest increase, I think this was probably being absorbed in that number or close to, if I see that correctly, is that a true statement?
Just want to make sure, because people keep referring to bag fees, it's it's the card you're talking about, not the bags.
You're sorry, I was actually talking with the bag, so it's about the overall, the township, the ways we we collect cash for garbage, either those fees at the. At the gate, but also the the bag fees as well as just an overall waste program, waste waste management program, not perspective, so. May not be related, but.
So I I would, I would say that probably over. The last. Eight years, we we had sort of a concerted effort to to try to bridge the curbside collection. To as close to a full cost recovery system as possible. By doing incremental garbage bag tags increases. And we've achieved that. We haven't really focused much with respect to. Increases at the transfer station, knowing that there are so many factors involved in in that end of it. We we sort of took the approach to focus on the curbside and. Now that we've achieved that, now it's it's a matter of whether you want to look at the at the other side of the equation.
Thank you, nothing else.
All right. Looking for more, I said about bringing a report back for tipping fees, but I don't get the sense that there's a whole lot of interest in in. Increasing or I don't hear anyone saying that they want to make it a cost, a full cost recovery for this year, I. I don't want a staff doing a whole lot of work if they don't, if that's not something that the group wants in front of them.
Through the chair, that's that's fine. We can take that as as status quo on on our end. And when the two thousand twenty-four costs come in and and the final look is done, excuse me. We can see if we've deviated from that at all and and bring it back if necessary, but other than that, we'll just consider it status quo.
All right, thank you for that, and we can move on. All right, so action items, which is. Item eight A, which is the third quarter treasury and reserve report, and I believe that's treasure Crawford.
Thank you through the chair. So looking at the third quarter, first looking at the financial report. So just some things to note here for cash and bank balances, you can see in the prior period in June. So looking at September, we're really seeing those tax payments coming in from the final tax bills being due on August thirtieth. Just an amount there and accounts receivable is just due to some reconciliation. And then looking at accounts payable slightly lower than the prior year. This is just due to not having those capital invoices processed yet. And then for the long-term debt, I just wanted to point out that so. When we, the next report for the long-term debt, I know a lot of the. Those loans and debt have come off in two thousand twenty-four and you will see those reflected. In Q four, when we do those adjustments for year end.
Thank you, the treasurer. Other questions regarding this report, anyone? The only note that I had was actually regarding that. That long, the long-term debt portion, and I I had it in my notes to make note of. Of the amount that fell off, which I believe is a hundred and twenty-seven, two ninety-two, and we. So that's built into into taxation, Mike, correct? It's built into into the budget?
Through the cherry, yes, that's correct. It's, we would have factored all this in at budget time when preparing the twenty twenty-four budget.
So ultimately, that frees up that hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Correct.
And just so you're nodding your heads. Okay, so we can move on to, there's no direction or anything, these are just information. Or just receive them. So do we want to move on to B then? Yes, okay, so you can bring that one forward as well.
So the variance report or the?
The variance report, yeah. I didn't, there was no questions.
So looking at the Q three budget variance reports, so for this period, we anticipate that expenses should be. Three quarters or seventy-five percent of the budget with twenty-five percent of the budget remaining. So I just wanted to point out that again, that one thing to be mindful of is that some revenues and expenses, they don't happen. Every month, some of them are on an annual basis. So just to take note of that, and some of our invoicing for capital projects hasn't been received yet, so. Really looking at Q four to to look at a a better picture of what the expenses are going to look like. So for this report, just shows that twenty-eight point five percent of the budget is remaining. And also to note that the transfers to reserves also happen in Q four. And some variances to note in revenues, so for building permit fees, we are seventy-four percent or close to seventy-five percent over budget. And this is a result of an increase of the issuance of permits and some larger projects that have happened in two thousand twenty-four. So also for both Spencerville and Cardinal Arena invoicing for advertising, advertising signage were sent out in October. So it should be reflected in the Q four report. And then in parks, just noting that that is just a transfer from reserves and will be reflected on the next report. And just some variances to note in expenses, so for public works, vehicle expenses over budget by nine point three eight percent. And just due to an increase in repairs and replacements, and a lot of these expenses have been discussed during the municipal. Disbursement reports. And then noting that the winter control budget is, there's just over fifty percent of the budget remaining, which leaves. A healthy remount in for the remaining of the year. And then the last thing I wanted to note was the Johnstown Pool and Daycamps is over budget by nineteen point six two percent. Which is offset by the increase of the budget and revenues of twenty-one point one six. Student increase of attendance for the summer, the summer day camps.
Okay, sorry. Before I begin on that one, I just want to go back for one second, my apologies. Going back to page forty-five of one twenty-three, I did have one question. And I'm sorry, I didn't ask it in advance, but on. Online, it's eighty-two, five, nine, five, zero, which is the tennis courts for Cardinal Phase One. Indicates that there was thirty thousand dollars in the budget for this year, that in Q three, we spent forty-two, four thirty-three on it. Can someone speak to what that actually is?
So sorry, this is for the capital budget quarter analysis?
It was in the treasury and reserve report. On page forty-five of one twenty.
Okay, so you're looking at the budget of the thirty.
Oh, yeah, sorry, the quarterly analysis, yeah, the Q three forty-two.
Of the forty-two.
Yeah, forty-two, four thirty-three.
If I could, I.
Says project complete, I'm just not sure exactly what that project was. If if there isn't an answer, we can leave it and then someone can get back.
Yeah, I'm just waiting to see if.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, so then we'll go back to the variance report and I will. I will start with with one myself and just for a little little bit of clarification, so. When it comes to operating capital expenses, so page fifty of one twenty-three. Third line from the bottom, the council portion of it, the council approved, so one fifty-nine, eight, sixty. Is the is the amount that's approved for in the council budget. The actual taxation so far is is one twelve, nine. Thirty-six, that includes everything, right? Entire line items like renumeration, courses, mileage. Everything is all is all included in that, in that one fifty-nine?
That's correct. Yeah, anything to do with that, that department is included in there.
And so, and so the reasoning for the increase, right, is is that members are actually going and doing. Conferences and taking classes and stuff and seeing an increase, you know, post COVID. that members are actually going and doing conferences and taking classes and stuff and seeing an increase, you know, post covid where um people weren't going out and actually doing doing anything over those three or two or three years, right? Now, the group certainly is attending Roma, attending AMO. I know Steve's on the go for lots of courses whenever he gets the opportunity to go. So just wanna point out that the amount in there is budgeted. We didn't use it in years pa- totally in years past, but we are starting to use it for council and counselor trading. Okay, um further. Anyone have questions?
Actually, just for a point of clarification, um this report is coming out of our new uh budget software. And uh cuz I heard you mention it, uh Mr. Mayor, this is actual taxation. It's actually transaction, so the TXN means transaction in in this report. So I don't think we can change that, so.
Yeah, okay, so important, important to note when we're going through that one. Okay, so it's the actual transactions to date. Yeah, okay.
And I can I can make that change in that header if that um makes more sense for everybody. Yeah, okay.
Does anyone else have questions regarding where we're at for the variance report? I mean, ultimately, I think the the news on this is really good, right? We're at twenty eight percent, we should be at twenty five percent, some were under, some were over. Our our costs for providing the day camps was a little bit higher, but we offset those higher costs with better revenue than we anticipated. Overall, it's a pretty good story so far. Looks like everything's in good shape, right?
It's projecting that way to the end of the year, yes.
Yeah, good. And there's nothing large on the horizon that that we've seen or coming through right now?
Nope, just awaiting some of those invoices for capital, uh but uh all budgeted and we're not anticipating anything over exceeding um what we've budgeted for.
Good testament to the good work that staff continues to do. Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Uh thank you, uh Mr. Mayor. This uh winter control, uh we're into November. So we're gonna carry that over though in reserves, I would think, right?
If there's a surplus.
If if we don't use it?
That's correct.
Okay, good. We got caught one year, so.
Okay, and so with no further questions and we can move on to uh item C. I guess that would have probably answered some of the things that I said, which is the um the third quarter council renumeration report.
Through the chair, yeah, so just echoing that and uh really uh just looking at um the conferences. I know I I don't anticipate any but too much expenses coming in in the next, the last quarter as uh the last conference, I believe, was Ama, which was in uh August. So a lot of those expenses have been captured here in this report.
Good, uh questions, comments on renumeration report? Seeing none, this um I think we have a bylaw that that says that this must be posted to uh to the township website as well, correct? So make sure that we continue to update those online for those that wanna see them. Um alright, then if there's no question, I see nothing. So thank you to the treasurer for those uh items and keep up the great work. Um move on to item D, which is Mapleview Landings donations uh donation options, room naming.
Thank you through the chair. This is a follow up from uh last committee meeting. Um council and committee were looking for clarification on uh the naming prospects for the rooms, um followed up again with the long term care team from the UCLG. They haven't technically finalized um draft slash mock signage and the wording that will be used on that. Um they provided me with two possible options, neither which is set in stone yet. Um the rooms that are funded um may receive what they've proposed in the past. The maple leaf plaques or other plaques that they may come up with on a design um that would indicate that the township rivers per cardinal or just per cardinal, whatever variation we so choose to use um would be possible or sponsored by. And the other possible option they're running with is that the rooms may be named after the township. Again, some variation, but they can't have it if some municipalities have donated larger amounts. Where even in our case, we could potentially do a dining room balcony plus residence rooms or variations of various bin bins where they can't have the same township name multiple times throughout the same community neighbor area. Um so they have tried to clarify that as much as possible. So one way or the other, there will be a reference to the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal. They just can't give us a hundred percent confirm what it will actually look like on a mock draft yet. Um so tonight, now that we had know that there'll be some shape or form of township Edwardsburg Cardinal reference, um we're looking to finalize and get direction for um the twenty two five that we have available. Um what rooms you may want to um donate towards and then the remaining to the bins, if you wanna select them. They haven't said exact cost for each one of the bins. It'll just be whatever's remaining could go towards the bins.
It's a an interesting situation because you're the right, I mean, if you had two dining room or four dining rooms and they were all called the Edwardsburg Cardinal Room, it would be uh it could be confusing. Sure, sure. Um alright, so recommendation that committee recommends that council enter into a naming rights agreement with United Counties and provide direction on how the funds are to be utilized to formalize agreement uh for council approval. I'm not, I've looked this over and and if you can't, it's the township of Edwardsburg that goes on them Edwardsburg Cardinal. I mean, I'm not really sure cuz you can't use it more than once, at least the way that I read, read that cuz it's confusing. So I'm not really, unless we're gonna do bins or something, something, but that seems like overkill to me. Just get our names on a plaque. Thanks for the donation, but.
Through this chair, yep, we we can agree on that, whatever shape or form they may come to in fruition. Um looking for a direction on what types of rooms, so we have twenty two five to work with. Um we could potentially do a couple of dining room balconies, they're ten thousand each. Split it up amongst that or the living rooms at fifteen thousand apiece, resident rooms for five thousand and whatever other breakdown for the um four or five different types of bins.
Yeah, it gets a little strange, right? Cuz I mean, what if we're gonna, you know, it's gonna be the Edwardsburg Cardinal balcony. Like you can't, the suggestion's not to have two, do we? It's like, how does? Chris?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. I uh thought about the exact same thing and I was like, how do you do this? You know, I mean, and I first thought, well, we can name each of our main towns and I wanna do that. And I I sort of wondered and I I realized there might be some sort of a uh a a truing up potentially if we had that conversation amongst ourselves. But you know, I I thought two balconies, you know, one being the Edwardsburg Cardinal uh uh dining balcony and then the other one, something to do with the port, uh knowing that that means that we have to figure out some dollars because that would, you know, the the dollars came from the township, but uh I just think that that would be a way to get two things, the the two of the bigger things go accomplished with key things that are in the area essentially, so. And then as far as the rest of the dollars go, you know, to your point, whatever, really, but.
So looking to, cuz it's a tricky little spot from a fund allocation standpoint, but the port does provide dollars to the township. When we utilize the twenty two five, have we direct, like, was it directed where those dollars came from? Cuz conceivably, what what Chris suggests is possible if if we use a portion of the capital portion of what donated last year from the port to fund the difference, then you could do that, do it that way, right? Otherwise, I'm not sure that it's appropriate, but I'm not sure that we allocated the where the twenty two five came from. I mean, obviously, none of it was the port, but.
You know, through the chair, it's all through the um community grants and donations in line.
So then that's not really possible. Okay, um it thi- this is gonna take way too long, like to. Why don't we just go living room and leave it the rest of it alone? We don't, I mean, we've done what we're gonna do. It's more about making the dollars to go there than the naming portion of it. Yeah, so that I'm nodding ahead. Alright, let's just do a not, let's just do a living room call today.
Uh then for clarification, the remaining balance just goes towards um the bins and totes.
I don't know that, yeah, I don't know that we need.
Where they see fit.
Sure. Uh I need a mover in a second or though, correct? Yeah, alright, moved, seconded, further discussion. Call the question. Good. We compensation review for non-union staff, CEO? No, treasure.
Treasure again.
Fire away.
Through the chair, so um really the purpose um is we're looking for approval for the twenty twenty five salary grids for the non-union and and for council renumeration. So background, um in July of this year, Pesci and Associates were retained by the township to do a full comprehension uh review of the salary, uh pay equity plan and also uh market uh competitiveness um review for non-union staff and for council. Uh so the process that um Pesci and Associates took first was um all positions in non-union uh were given the opportunity to fill out a position uh questionnaire, which went over things like uh education, uh skills, um responsibility levels, supervision. Um and those were compiled, uh they were given a rating and uh staff was also given the opportunity to appeal if they didn't feel that um the rating was reflective of the position. Um those were compiled to create uh uh a comparison of uh the current level of the positions versus the market. So um twenty surveys were sent out to uh local municipalities, neighboring and municipalities of our uh same size and budget. And a comparison of those positions uh were had with our current uh salaries versus the salaries of the the participating uh recipients of the municipalities. Um and Pesci and Associates came up with uh a new uh pay grid that uh reflected the competitiveness of the market. So the last time that uh market review was conducted in the township was in twenty thirteen, so uh over eleven years um with the same pay grids. Uh results uh were presented to council in closed session on Monday, November fourth and direction was given to staff to present the grids which are attached in this report. So I just wanted to note as well that um typically uh going into next budget, we would be talking about uh cost of living increase uh with these new pay grids. This was in, this would incorporate the cost of living increase for twenty twenty five. And then in twenty twenty six, we will be using those new uh pay grids and then discussing the cost of living um increase for twenty twenty six. Yeah, so for financial considerations, so the twenty twenty five grid will add approximately a hundred and seventy eight thousand to the twenty twenty five salary budget. And for council, this will add thirty four thousand, um just over thirty four thousand for the twenty twenty five uh council budget. And I also wanted to note that because of the the large discrepancy between the two pay grids, we are uh using uh like a step uh approach to implement these new pay grids. So half of the allotment is gonna be given in January and then the second half being given um July first. When typically when staff is uh moved in their pay grid, um instead of that, will be given the second half of that allotment for the 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 pay adjustment.
Uh thank you to the treasurer, okay, it um certainly was time for sure, you know, twenty thirteen was the was the last, there's a certainly, you know, the the responsibility for pay pay equity and the uh market of market competitiveness. We've certainly um felt the difficulties of of that in in advertising and um trying to attract new new talent and bring new talent in um and competitive pay and and benefit is always is always a part of that uh that difficulty and all always part of that. So when we haven't done it since twenty thirteen, certainly was time to um get it up updated, I think is fair to say. Um they tiptoe around this um cuz I know that we can't. There there are ways that we can discuss it, ways that we can, and I know we can't discuss it by individual position or by titles or by uh anything like that because it identifies individuals. And and that's, I know we had that discussion uh when we had the presentation from from Pesky and Associates enclosed. So just reminding everyone, you know, about the the sensitivity to the closed session portion of that discussion. Uh and having said that, I'll open the Florida questions. Anyone questions or comments?
I'll go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor to the CEO, uh the two hundred and thirteen thousand three eighty four, where's that coming from? And or to the treasurer, can someone help me out on that, please?
Where where are you getting the two hundred and thirteen thousand from?
Um the one seventy eight and the thirty four and.
Okay.
The total, like where where's that? Is that gonna be taxation?
Uh it'll be um a combination of uh of operating surplus and uh and reserves for this.
Good, thank you. Further questions, Chris?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I mean, it's it's always a tricky one to review the whole thing. I mean, we we we, you know, uh to to your point, uh um just at a very over level. I mean, we had it, we had a separate assessment done and and uh, you know, it it was, you know, um we were behind the curve where we should have been essentially. And uh, you know, unfortunately, when you have to true these things up, it it is unfortunate. I mean, you know, we wanna make sure that the staff is uh is is taken care of because it's an honest about retain, it's also retaining as well, which uh, you know, we've we've, you know, people have a tendency to leave if they can find something closer, uh it's just as close that uh that compensates some more. So we so we had to true that up and uh uh, you know, I just I just think that, you know, this is this is us just catching up and hopefully we don't have to do this so that we do it every eleven years. We do it more often and it's not such a such a big difference essentially, but yeah, that's it.
Yeah, and I I think it also um counts in for our grid reviews too, right? Which is part that I guess I didn't mention in the beginning is that, again, while we can't discuss the individual positions, people or or whatever, it also accounts that we did have a responsibility to do the grid reviews. We did the grid reviews uh with this and it's included in in those portions as well. Uh Karen, John? No? Counselor, anything? No? Okay, so there is a recommendation. The recommendation reads that committee recommend that council approve the twenty twenty five salary grids for non-union staff council renumeration effective January twenty one, twenty twenty five. Moved by Council Martel, seconded by Council Ward, all in favor? Good. Okay, we'll move on to the audit plan and engagement letter, letter F.
Through the chair. So uh looking at the twenty twenty four audit plan and engagement letter, uh so we're looking to engage with M N P uh for the twenty twenty four audit. So um the interim audit has been uh performed uh in Au- October of this year and the final audit will be taking place in in twenty twenty five. So the change year over yearing um for fees of the audit fees is a thousand dollars of thirty eight thousand coming from twenty twenty four and then in twenty twenty five for the twenty twenty four um audit is thirty nine thousand.
Good, thank you. Hiring our auditor. When do we tender this out?
Uh through the chair, um I believe we can, there at any point we can tender um or audit audit services. I just, I don't believe that, I think the relationship with the current auditor, um there really wasn't a push uh to look for for new audit and um but that's certainly something that we can look at in the future. And um but that's certainly something that we can look at in the future.
Yeah, certainly seen a steady increase. Um, you know, I think it's gone from twenty six to thirty nine or a little little less than that. Um, uh in the time that I I've been up here, I guess that that's what we just discussed with the last part. I mean, the prices, prices are going up, but it certainly seems between the port and um and the township, we certainly pay a ton of money in audit fees. Just, um, it's a big, it's a big line item, so um, all right, comments, further questions?
Um, through through the chair as well, um at the the last uh county uh C O meeting, there there was some appetite to do a a tender for audit services as a group. So um if uh we decide to go down that road, we'll participate in that tender process.
Would that be for next year then, or the idea, next year, not for the, not for this year? Yeah, okay. Chris?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, you you're certainly right, like we've seen this increase over the last the several years. Uh, this latest increase, I did have to double check again when I looked at it because um in the previous year's experience, I was just just, I thought that was ten thousand dollars, not a thousand dollars increase, so good on them for truing it up to what basically is the inflation rate this time around. But uh uh I I do worry that when we have the conversation um this late in the year, if in fact that was ten thousand dollars this time around, I would have certainly liked to have seen us do a tender instead. And I'm not sure that gives us enough time to do that, so I don't know if we can sort of maybe have this cover, this this look see earlier next year, just to see if we have that uh that development, if so, then then maybe we want to go down that route, whether the county does or not, I guess, so that's it, thanks.
Uh, yeah, through the through the chair to Counselor Ward, um this was uh a bit delayed uh in in getting to 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 counsel, but uh if we would have seen a bigger increase, uh we wouldn't have allowed the uh interim audit to proceed.
Thank you very much, that's perfect, thank you.
Good, further questions around the table about the audit? Okay, hearing and seeing none, then there is a recommendation that committee recommends that municipal council receives the two thousand twenty four audit plan and authorizes the C O to sign the engagement letter as a requirement of the annual audit, I need a mover. Moved by Counselor Ward, seconded by Counselor Martel, um further discussion, I'll call the question, all in favor? Good. Okay, so I believe that puts us on to the R B C contract renewal, back to Ms. Crawford.
Thank you for the chair. So this is the service agreement between the township and R B C for banking services. Uh, so the current contract did expire August thirty first of two thousand twenty four. And the uh previous engagement was signed for five years, beginning in September uh two thousand nineteen. So we were presented with the the renewal, um the main and only change being uh the interest arrangement or requiring a minimum balance of two hundred and fifty thousand um for the interest rate of prime minus one point seven five. All others, all of all of the other services and fees have remained uh the same from the prior uh agreement. So just looking for a direction to continue uh banking with R B C for the next five years.
Good, thank you, treasure. Um, and if memory serves me right, the uh the reason that we uh Royal Bank was our preferred person was because we had a branch uh here in Spencerville, is that? Mic microphone?
We moved at one time, we were with Crown Dominion. And when we re-uh tendered out, Royal decided to come back and match their price. Royal had gradually increased their fee a lot, the one sticking point when we left, they weren't paying any interest uh on our operating account, even though the operating had seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Sat sat in it. They matched T D after the tender had closed and they come back and seen they didn't, they come back and want the council to waive the tender and and stay stay with them. But we didn't, we went with R B with T D for five years and then when we re-tendered, they come down, come in underneath T D on the services and stuff and I think you were there the last time when they left. Moved out of Spencille here and there was way to discussion about whether we should stay with them or not, so.
Yep, that's the way my memory remembers it as well, yeah. Um, uh, and just to be clear, so the the the, it says the main and only change um uh is the interest in interest arrangement, minimum balance, two fifty, so other than that, there's really not.
Through the chair, uh no, no changes to the service fees or uh levels of service from R B C.
Okay, and we've been uh happy with everything with R B C to this to this point?
Through the chair, yes, they um the relationship that we have with the the current account manager, very responsive um and no complaints.
Is there, is there, would there be a potential benefit at all? Do you see the, is there a potential benefit of of going out to tender with it? Or is the thought that we're getting pretty much industry standard or or better than already?
Through the chair, I, I mean, I don't think it hurts to see what other banks uh could offer us. Um, the risk there is they might offer us lower fees the first year and then or for the first contract and then again we'll be in the same situation. But I mean, it's definitely something that we can look at exploring uh what other banks are offering and um for the interest rated, that is a very good um good rate. And I'm not sure if other banks would be willing to match that, but we can definitely explore those options.
All right, let's see what the table says.
Um, I I don't see anything in here and and I guess it was further along with where where the conversation was going with with the mayor. Does this put us exclusively with, like, does it, I don't write, tried even doing a search for exclusive and I didn't see anything there. So should we decide to do this as well as look at other options out there? Does this mean that we can't do that after we sign something like this here?
Uh, through the chair to Council Board, I would need to 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 look at that further to see what our options are before signing. So if we want to defer signing.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure I was gonna go that far, but I mean, it is a five-year contract, which puts the next council. We always try and, you know, it's one of these things where we we implicate the next council with with this decision. Um, it doesn't look like a bad deal, I just, like I said, I didn't see anything that said exclusively that we uh that we're tied to them. It just is minimum balance of two hundred and fifty thousand is the most that I saw that was implicating us entirely and uh um, so um, I I don't think I have any other questions, I think I was just trying to see, you know, um, in the furtherance of, you know, trying to push this along. Do we need to, you know, could we still do that anyways, as a as a look see, so?
Uh, no, I like us to, if if staff's happy and and treasurer's happy working with them. Uh, let's say put, I don't want them to do any more extra work if they don't have to. And if they're happy and 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 the price is 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 competitive, uh I'd rather stay put and not jump bank to bank every five years or whatever.
I would agree with the deputy mayor on this one through the chair, you know, staff is happy with it and we got to trust the people we have.
I believe the contract's set setting all the service fees at the same same fee, so you got a five-year freeze on your service charges. As you're going to get likely.
Yeah, I I would uh agree with that, all right, so there is, I'm gonna read the, all right, I got stuff to read it. That committee recommends that municipal council enters into a contract uh renewal with Royal Bank of Canada first uh from September first, two thousand twenty four to August thirty first, two thousand twenty nine for banking services and authorize the mayor and treasurer to sign the agreement. Moved by Deputy Mayor Dilabah, seconded by Counselor uh Martel, further discussion. Hearing none, then I'll call the question, all in favor? Good, and so then we're looking at item H, which is draft plan extension request for Meadowland subdivision and Tim?
Yes, through there, Mr. Chair, uh the applicant um for Meadowlands subdivision has requested uh an extension to the draft plan approval. Uh, the draft plan approval process was uh initially approved back in two thousand ten and it has uh received a number of extensions over the years. Uh, the lapsing date is actually coming up uh February uh tenth uh two thousand twenty five. Uh, they're requesting a one-year extension uh as per the county's uh uh timelines uh that are in the agreement. Uh, this would give them a little extra time to address some of the C N concerns uh in regards to uh crossing. Uh, and also, uh, they've just recently purchased uh the property to the east. Uh, and um that is to address some uh access concerns and uh possibly um expansion of the subdivision as well too in the future. So staff feels uh that the extension uh would allow further conversations to take place. Um, or uh options explored to provide uh construction of the secondary access to the subdivision. There's no financial or policy implications. And uh there's a a recommendation uh for the uh for the committee.
Good, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Um, just look to staff quick, I know um uh it it hasn't, there has to be a change ultimately for that and and an approval for that. Um, I mean, obviously the Gill Street, um the need for the Gill Street is is it it's just not going to work by the sounds of it. So um there's another option that they're they're exploring. Uh, they have to go through that that process and this year will give them the ability to finalize that process and get this, get this done and get get closer to shovels in the ground or at least get maybe some shovels in the ground.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct.
All right, so for that reason, I have no issue with, uh I personally don't have uh issue with the one-year with the one-year extension, but I think this is it, you know, I, it's time to, it's time to get moving on this one, in my opinion. So I'm I am gonna open it, if there are any comments or questions, I'll just look for hands, so. Um, Chris, go ahead.
Uh, so when we say one-year extension, that's as after the February twenty twenty fifth, or is it one year from today, I guess, is the first question that I had? Or, no, it might end of month.
Uh, through there, Mr. Chair, um it would uh, it would be from February.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, and so, I mean, it, I mean, it, you know, I I think we've all been sitting here and and I've been on the committees, well, six years now and and we've seen several of these and it is getting harder and harder to take this seriously, to be honest. But uh uh, you know, uh I think aside with what the mayor said, as far as um, you know, because it looks like the uh the C N railway is is not going to be the uh the way through. Um, I I I'm I'm okay with this time, but I'm, like I said, I'm really uh getting near the end on 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 this one, um being considered serious, like I said.
Yeah, the, I mean, the applicant uh has bought a property, they um to, uh I think, working with staff to uh alleviate, you know, and and fulfill the obligation of a second uh entrance. They removed a a home, a dilapidated home to be able to gain access. It seems like they're quite willing to move forward. I know that we all want to see that infrastructure get in the ground and houses get built. So this gives, you know, if we don't extend it, that's not going to happen, right? So so I think giving this one year, um I think, you know, I know for me that that's that's my deadline, right? So um but I don't see any harm in doing this, they seem to be willing to move forward and they are act sort of showing that they are willing to do what it takes to get it to get it started, so. All right, um. Whoops, there is a recommendation that committee recommends, that council recommends in favor of a one-year extension with the conditions of draft ran, draft approval for the Meadowlands. North subdivision file zero seven dash T dash zero nine zero zero one, need a mover. Move by Counselor Martel, I need a second or. Counselor Ward, I will call the, or if there's further discussion, sorry. Okay, then I will call the question, all in favor? That was a pinch-nosed one. Uh, okay, so moves forward and we are on to the quarterly active subdivision update and I look to Mr. Fisher again for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh some committee members have uh requested uh the staff to provide an update on subdivisions uh or active subdivisions that are are currently in place in the township. Uh, we've created a um a single-page um form that kind of summarizes uh the application, uh where it's at, uh the application status. Um, and uh hopefully this gives a a good detail outline of uh where the the uh the subdivision uh draft plan uh application is at. Um, we're going to be uh condensing this down into a single uh chart as well too. But this is uh what we have in front of you right now is the more detailed stuff that uh staff can use as well too, just to uh determine where where we're at. Um, I'm happy to to go through it with you or to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, good, uh thank you, Mr. Fisher, good chart, it's a nice addition. Uh, it certainly, you know, lets us know, you know, the the historical dates, the horse historical number of units at and having that at quick access is, it's helpful, I think, uh especially for uh anyone in the public that's looking, you know, to see what's going on or, you know, what the possibilities there. Um, there are, you know, um going back to what we just talked about Meadowlands, you know, in two thousand and ten, it was forty nine. In two thousand twenty one, um uh council reviewed it and increased, you know, um the ability to put different types of units and and recognize the housing crisis and went to one forty six, but we still haven't um managed to get that where it needs to be. And if you look at Lockmasters, it continues to move uh forward uh bit by bit, piece by piece, you know, it it's it's rolling along. So um I think this is a great, great report and a great uh update piece. Um, now, if, having said that, I'll leave it to committee if they have any questions for Mr. Fisher, looking for hands. Seeing none.
Sure, uh just, so just a um, I I like a report as well, by the way, I think you did a great job and it it does summarize things and it's it's good to see that, for sure. Um, when we have these two, these are the only two active applications we're looking at at this point, is that, that's correct? Okay, I just want to be sure we're clear that there's, I know because there's other ones out there, but they're not, they haven't put anything forward yet, so, okay, thank you.
Uh, seeing no more than, I think we're moving on to entrance, entranceway bylaw review and
I'll refer to the Director of Operations.
Thank you, Mr. C O, um and to uh Chair and Committee. So just wanted to bring forward um more of a more of a signal with respect to an entranceway bylaw um update that would be coming forward. Uh, upon our review of uh of current uh costs associated with the installation of it, uh we are currently, the fee that we're charging at the seven hundred dollars uh per um entranceway, our material um costs are 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 just over, a little over a thousand dollars. So we're certainly not um recouping the uh the the costs of installing the uh the entrance culvert. I think based on some of the conversation uh that we heard earlier tonight, uh it's certainly um I'm getting the impression that uh that that labor is not to be incorporated necessarily to be incorporated in. So we would be looking at bringing forward something um uh for the 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 next uh next year and 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 next season, that would come close to uh uh recouping the uh material costs for those uh for those installations, not only residential but uh commercial uh farm entrances in that regard. Um, the other um, a couple of other areas um with uh wi- within the environmental and regulatory framework, it is getting a little more challenging of uh installing culverts throughout the uh throughout the uh uh year. So uh we will be uh looking to do our best to address some of those uh areas so that uh we're not seeing uh extended delays in that area. And I think finally, uh with respect to uh hard uh top surfaces uh of driveways, typically where we have a paved road and a resident is paving their driveway. Um, not very often i- is that signaled in advance, uh it's typically uh completed. And when we go about doing our um road reconstruction projects, we typically uh replace like with like. It's just, it it's just more of an an information item and I'm I'm not necessarily sure in that regard that we want to go forward with advanced notice of paving of driveways. It it may be very difficult from a, from from a permitting and regulator regulatory um standpoint. I think it's just an item that we need to be aware of um during uh during construction projects. So I think with that said, hoping that uh committee will uh recommend that we um um, update the entranceway bylaw and bring something forward for uh for committee and council consideration.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize my mic was still on. Um. Okay, I'll leave it. Uh, thank you, uh Director of Operations. So I'll leave it uh open for comments and questions from the committee.
Thank you, uh duly chaired to to uh Dave. Uh, is this an estimate what it costs? Is this what might be coming back to? It's a thousand and twenty five or will it be up? Or do you have any idea at this time?
So through the chair to the deputy mayor, uh basically the thousand twenty five is actual cost of the uh of the materials to install that culvert.
Uh, sorry, uh, and that's not labor either. We're trying to put labor or we're not trying to put labor pay, but it's not including labor.
That is correct.
Um, no, don't, no, Karen, John, anything? All right. So there is a recommendation that committee recommends that council direct staff to prepare a new entranceway bylaw for their consideration. Um, need a mover. Need a seconder. Come on, guys, one of you. Sorry, I didn't see your hand. Um, uh, Council Martell, second. Uh, further discussion. Okay, hearing none, then I'll call the question. All in favor. Good. All right, and our winter operations report and I'll look to uh Chris for this.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and through the chair. Uh, tonight's information item is the winter maintenance operations uh report. Uh, so winter maintenance level service policy by law twenty nineteen dash sixty five sets a procedural framework for ensuring that the township continuously improves on safe and sustainable delivery of winter maintenance services. Uh, the Public Works Department winter season period is between November first and April fifteenth of each calendar year. Uh, during this period, staff maintain township resources at readiness to respond to a winter event. Recognizing uh adverse conditions that occur at that time of year, resources will be deployed as necessary. Uh, Public Works is responsible for providing winter maintenance through uh service throughout the township. Uh, some of the following components is components for service are establishing proper treatment rates for roadways, design of plow and sidewalk routes, ensuring proper up-to-date weather forecasts, uh condition monitoring, monitoring systems. Uh, provide information in a timely manner when asked, always review and always reviewing best practices. During winter weather events, it is recognized operational decisions will need to be made on based on local conditions depending upon the extent of severity of the winter storm event. As a result, there may needs to be some reasonable deviations from the level of service policy. At a minimum, the township will adhere to minimum maintenance standards for municipal highways. As prescribed by the Ontario Ministry uh Ontario Ministry of Transportation under Regulation two thirty nine oh two. Uh, other regulatory requirements will also be met, including but not limited to those set out in the Occupational Health and Safety Act and the Highway Traffic Act. So under the Highway Traffic Act, uh, we must follow uh CVR regulations. So we uh, the township, we follow a uh um cycle one, which is a seven day, seventy hour uh operation. So what that means, drivers aren't supposed to go seventy hours or up to seven, they can work up to seventy hours in seven days. But going over, they need a thirty-six hour rest period to reset. So in order to reset, you need that thirty-six hour rest period. There is a cycle two, which is ma- most commonly used for uh high under the for highway tractors. So our road network is comprised of local roads which carry local traffic to the United Counties of Leeds and Granville. Our roads are fallen under classes four, five and six as defined in minimum maintenance standards. Uh, the purpose of winter operations is to reduce hazards of snow covered and icy road conditions to motorists. To maintain public access to all community and industrial facilities to ensure accessibility to the road system for the handling of emergencies by fire, ambulance and police services. Uh, maintain safe passable passable school bus routes and provide safe and passable sidewalks for pedestrians in areas designated for winter maintenance. So plowing procedures for roads and sidewalks, uh plowing operations begin as early as four AM and will continue until needed until six PM. Uh, no out, no plowing operations are usually conducted from six PM to four AM, except for public safety, public safety concerns or extreme conditions. Uh, salt sanding operations will begin as soon as practical after becoming aware that road conditions have become icy and will continue until slippery conditions are relieved. So plowing operations will not exceed thirteen hours a day as per the Highway Traffic Act. So that means we can only drive thirteen hours a day. You can work up to fourteen hours. And then you're you're required to have a a ten hour rest period. Now, if we have a uh a a big storm and we have to work sixteen hours, we're able to do so, but the next day your rest period gets longer. So if we were, if you were, if you worked uh sixteen hours, the additional three hours have to be tagged on to the next day for for your rest period. So our plow uh plow oper- operations are broken down into seven plow routes and two sidewalk routes. Uh, combination plow sander units complete the assigned routes in the average of approximately five and a half hours. Uh, all routes are equipped of automatic uh vehicle location, ABL equipment, providing the following information. Vehicle identification, location, time, plow up, plow down, wing up and down, application on or off and the application rate. So snow accumulation for roadways, winter maintenance consisted plowing and salting, that will begin within eight hours of snow accumulation of eight centimeters of snow. For paved surfaces, road salt would be applied on paved roads within urban areas of Cardinal, Johnstown and New Wexford. Sand salt mixture material would be applied as required on rural roads in Spencerville and rural roads. Uh, the rate shall increase based on weather conditions and road temperatures. So gravel surfaces, when gravel surface is not uh completely frozen, typically uh the beginning of the season and also sometimes during the uh January thaw. Uh, accumulation is less than ten centimeters will not be plowed to protect the road surface. Uh, sand salt mixture will be applied to uh, be applied during winter operations once the threshold has been met. Uh, sidewalk surfaces, resources to clear snow from sidewalks shall be deployed within forty-eight hours after snow accumulation has ended to reduce snow depth to a maximum of eight centimeters. So if you're looking at the winter le- uh level of service policy table one uh for under snow accumulation, we have basically class of highway, snow depth and time of completion. So under class, we have a class four roadway, snow depth becomes eight centimeters. We have sixteen hours from that time, it becomes uh six, um, eight centimeters to clear the roadways. Uh, an example, if it's ten PM and we have eight centimeters of snowfall, I have sixteen hours to get the roadways cleared. So if we happen to go at four by four AM to clear the snow, we we are within our our standard. So ice formation, uh solid application will begin within eight hours practical becoming aware that the roadways become icy and will continue as practical until conditions are safe. Uh, gravel road surfaces, uh application begin eight hours. Uh, ice blading with a grader can be used after weather event has completed and the staff members also become available. And that all, that is also uh upon uh CVR rules. Uh, sidewalk surfaces, solid application operations begin as soon as practical. Improve traction within forty years after becoming aware that that the sidewalks have become icy. It'll become practical until conditions are deemed safe. So under your table two in the winter level service under icy roads and treatments. Basically, a class four, you'll have a uh twelve hours uh for time of completion. Uh, typically sidewalks are I, they're treated almost like roadways when the road, the uh combination units go out, the sidewalk units go and uh sometimes you go right away, sometimes you go an hour or do it later. So if uh breakdowns occurred during winter operations, combination spreader plow um routes are doubled up. Meaning trucks will will do their route and then go on to the route that's disabled and and help out. As far as side, uh side, uh the sidewalk unit, sort of the same thing happens if the cardinal unit goes down, the Spencerville unit goes to cardinal two. So we can achieve minimum maintenance. Uh, snow removal operations, uh snow removal on roadways and parking lots will be carried out when required. Uh, a decision will be made to implement a specific operation to carry out the removal process. Uh, snowbanks are removed to reduce uh in size when they begin to restrict sightlines, travel width or pedestrian or vehicle traffic. Uh, snowbank operations come secondary to uh snow clearing operations.
Are there any? Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. My, I'll ask the question, I think, first is that um this is the operation as outlined and this is the standard as outlined in in the bylaw that's following twenty-nine sixty-five, right? So there's no, uh, this is just an update of what we actually do and how we do it.
Uh, through the chair, that that is correct.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that there was, I didn't have any marked or any track changes or any any significant um uh suggestion to move away from this. So it's just a providing a report for information. Yeah. Good.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right. Then I'll look to the table. Are there other questions regarding the report or just receiving for information? Yep.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's it's more of its uh comment. I mean, uh, we've had two winters now on this term of council and uh and and the the roads, I think, uh, safe to say everybody's happy with, it seems to be anyways, comments I've received, everybody's happy with roads. I have had lots of conversations about sidewalks. I know we've had various conversations about it as well. Um, and and is there, you know, and I know we have a, it's sort of a generic forty-eight hours for for those to happen. Um, is is there uh? And and I mean, I, I mean, and maybe it's a matter of waiting until, I know we have some new software we're using this year versus prior years. So maybe that'll be a better tool for us to know how we track to that forty-eight hours, because one of the things that that jumps out to me is maybe an idea for down the road potentially is is taking something similar to that table one, snow accumulation and using that also for a application to snow pod, depending on the on the on the storm we have as well. But otherwise, like I said, great job you guys are doing. And then like I said, if it, uh, it's just the sidewalks I hear about, not the roads itself, so.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, no questions, just to comment. This fantastic report. It would be nice if we could somehow, especially this time of the year, highlight this on our social media feeds or our websites, because we get a lot of questions from, you know, it's snowing out, when's the cloud gonna get here? It would be great to be able to direct residents to websites, say, hey, this is how we do it, you know? Thank you.
All right. Thanks again, uh, Mr. LeBlanc and to the to the crew that keep the roads uh clear and safe. Uh, hopefully, there won't be that much work to do this winter. Uh, all right, moving on to number nine, counselor inquiries, notice of motion. Does anyone have an inquiry or notice of motion? Wow, first meeting ever. All right. Member reports. Does anyone have a report that they wish to bring forward?
Uh, I'd just like to say, uh, Mr. Mayor, I was in uh Cardinal today to lay reefer the for our township, I was with Cardinal Township. It was a great crowd, went down to the Legion after for for lunch. It was full. So all in all, uh, Mr. Martell was there. And as wise, so all in all, it was a good crowd and and it's nice to see that the people coming out to respect the the people that uh have given their lives up for us to have our freedom. So to those who the Cardinal Legion for me.
Yeah, and I'll and I'll echo that. Uh, similarly, I know Counselor Ward and I were here in uh Spencerville today. Um, uh Reverend Hutton put on a uh a great service pre pre-ceremony outside, very well attended. Uh, the children from the school sang Highway of Heroes. It's brings a tear to your eye every single time that uh that you hear that song and you cannot get it. You sing it all day after hearing the kids sing it, right? So um, uh, very well done by the Spencerville Legion uh as well. So uh, we certainly honor those veterans. Uh, I will, um, and I wish, I know I talked to the deputy mayor about this this weekend. Um, the group got together to decorate the Port of Johnstown tender for the uh upcoming uh this Friday night, um, light up the the night Prescott Christmas parade. And we decided um in the spirit of the way that this council works to ask um the department heads and and staff to extend the invitation to all of staff and their families. If anybody wants to join us uh on that float or and and be part of that parade. Um, they're welcome. We've been doing them as council. We think that they're fantastic and a lot of fun. Um, but we're, we are a team here and it's not just council as a team, it's committee members and it's staff as well. So uh, we'd, we'd like you to extend that um out to to your families and and the group uh at the township, we meet uh in the Prescott High School parking lot at six PM. Just dress warm. Um, question period. We have questions at all? Looking to the clerk, nothing. Okay, and we have no closed session. So we're looking at adjournment. I need a mover for adjournment. Move by Council Ward, seconded by Council Martell. All in favor, we're adjourned.